I will call the meeting of the Carthage City Council for Thursday, August 4th, 2022 to order. Would you call the row please? And Councilwoman Penapple?
Here.
Councilman Batcock?
Here.
Councilman Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Peters? Councilman Teddy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reese?
Here.
City Attorney and Deputy?
Here.
Have you all had a chance to look at the minutes from July 7?
Motion approved.
A motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have consideration of bills over 10,000, and we have a few of these because we've had some emergency situations. So as we, I would, if we can, just take them one at a time so we can kind of explain what happened each time. So the first one is Save Industries. The latter, of course, that's Chief Hyatt. We just had a little over what we thought on that one, right?
Motion to approve that first bill?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Appreciate it.
Okay. The first one, mainstream, commercial divers, and put that together with Zion. First, do you want to explain just a second about that?
Well, we went over it for last meeting, but we finally got the bills in.
Okay.
So these are just the actual costs.
Okay.
Motion to approve those two and approve.
Okay, motion approved, those are due.
Second.
Did we already, didn't we already approve this last meeting?
No, we didn't have a figure.
We didn't have a figure, okay. So any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think you're going to give us a sewer line, you guys put in a program.
Yeah, the sewer line one, that's for.
Couldn't agree with it, they didn't come back and take it.
Okay, so the next one is to Isengard for sewer line repair. Do you want to speak to that, Les, or Derek, whoever?
As the emergency repair was approved.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any citizens here who would like to speak? Yes, yes, I'm sorry. If we don't, what we would like to do, our two engineers, we've got, one on the phone and one here in person. And if it's possible, they would like to go ahead because we do have to leave. Is, could you, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, which line items in?
Well, it's the engineer report, so we're just moving it up to.
Motion to move the engineer report up.
I did have a little, a citizen that contacted me, still has some concerns about that industry.
Brass and all about that.
Have you gotten any calls about that this week?
Not that, Les, if you were.
And I didn't have any voicemails.
You didn't have any voicemails?
Or emails.
It was the same.
Evan, hold on a second, okay?
But I don't know what I was talking about, but I know letters have went out and one has been addressed, so.
But we'll continue, we do have the codes person now working with us, so do you have an address? Just give it to her and she'll, she will send a letter out. She's very good about that.
I got a question, take it. Second.
Okay, second, to let the engineers go next. Any discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I tell you, since he's on the phone, do you mind if we go first?
No, we're good.
Evan?
Yes.
Okay, since you're on the phone, we're going to let you go first, if you would. If you could talk to us about the fire hall and also the paving on Main Street. What's the update as far as what will happen with that?
The fire hall, the contractors complete everything but the gas. He's waiting on Kemp Brothers Construction, which does the penalty gases service. They're supposed to come and redo the service portion that should be done. And we're ready for a walk through and a final. As far as paving, I've got Vulcan. Vulcan's looking at the contract back several months ago. They're still in agreeance with looking at what the asphalt index is at the time that they paved. And looking at their bid versus what it could, where we tell the numbers without having to re-bid it. That will be our call once they give us that number. But we thought we'll be looking at a number possibly if they get the water line done. And they're on board, we're still trying to get the project. Their concern is if the project runs over on the water line, that the asphalt plants will be shut down. And that they'll want you to have to wait till spring, but they were still interested. And their concern also was with all the cuts in the road. We've given it time to settle, so that was the concern on the paving.
Okay, I think there's a question, did you have a question?
Hey Evan, Cole Eagle, question for you is, as far as that paving goes, we're talking about a full pave across all lanes. When we're talking about paving, not just the patchwork above it where we've done the repair, correct?
Yeah, it's a complete overlay and complete restructure.
And where's that, where's that paving going from what, what street to what street down Main Street?
Third Street all the way to Highway 25.
All right, third avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, third avenue.
Well, actually, you'll start at second, Evan.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, second, second.
Okay.
I think so.
Any more questions before we, so, okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and then we have our engineer Stephen Jones, please.
Yes ma'am. So we have three projects that are active right now, obviously the project Futuro Alley that's in the process of being closed out with SRF. That loan, that project, we're waiting on David to send back the final change order. Oh, we're reducing the total cost of that project by 12,000 and some odd dollars. So that's 12,000 and some odd dollars that the city had budgeted that you will get back into your water sewer fund once that final change order is signed out of your budget. So, moving on to the Turkey Creek project, work has begun on that, they do have materials. Talked to the pump station supplier this afternoon. They are telling me that they should have the pump station on site in two weeks. They're up there, they've made the taps onto the existing water line and they're installing the lines over to the location where the pumps, the new pump station will be installed. The existing pump station, for everybody who's not aware, that's there, is over 30 years old, those pumps are just worn out. And so we looked at changing out the pumps, renovating that, you know, what we could do. And then it was elected just to put in a new pump station that runs on VFD drives to supply water in a little of having to be dependent upon the tank at the top of the hill, so. The next project I want to touch on for just a second is the INI study. So that is progressing along quite well, we'll have that wrapped up here this fall. And you will get a set of plans out of that for areas that have been identified as being the worst portion of the system. I'm sure everybody has probably heard that there was smoke coming up out of the ground all around town. So that process led to the identification of 286 defects in your sewer system. So that's 286 locations where the system was not closed and smoke came out of the ground. Of those defects, 222 of those occurred on private service lines. So that's the private property of the homeowner. So that could be a clean out, it could be a busted portion of the pipe in the yard, and then any times it rains, anytime it rains, water comes in through those defects and ends up in the sewer system. There were 64 public defects, one of those has been repaired. And 15 of the defects were identified as being what we would call severe. That means that they're in a very low lying area, the amount of smoke that came out of them, you know, suggests a very large break in the pipe. That would be taking on a lot of stormwater. Another thing here, I don't have a map, sure, I was telling the mayor earlier, for next council meeting, we'll have a nice little reduced packet for you with some photos, some smaller maps and stuff that you can look through without having to look through a 286 page report, just kind of a little snapshot of what's in there. You will have three very large binders that'll reside here, they'll have all this information in it as well as having that information on thumb drives and on your computer systems, so.
I'm assuming the city is not responsible for the private defects? But will we, since we already have the study, will we send out letters to let them know, like, hey, you got a defect in there? Is that something?
That, we'll make recommendations, this is something that all cities municipalities run into, down Carthage is no different. So it is private property, so you don't have the, you know, it's not yours, you're not, you know, so you're not responsible for going in there and fixing it. We really have to look at your ordinances, see how your ordinance is written. Most people don't have ordinances that say if we find a defect, we're going to fix that, and then that, that onto your sewer bill or something. I would say that as far as the private goes, your idea is an excellent way to start, you know, just saying, hey, here's the defects, here's the photos. You know, it's your responsibility to fix this, unless that defect is one of the ones that's severe. And then we probably just need to have a conversation with that homeowner because that would be one that could be contributing a significant amount of water into your sewer system, and we need to make sure they work on that one.
So 15 severe is all, out of all the defects, 15 severe, not just out of the public defects?
That's right, that's out of everything, or 15 that were identified as being severe. And that's split between public and private. So, most of the time what we find is it's clean outs, you know, somebody's mowed their yard, the clean out was sticking up too high, they didn't have a box on it, they hit it with their lawn mower. You know, it breaks at the top of the clean out or something, some of them may not ever take on any water when it rains, you know, if it's up high enough, depending upon how the yard is shaped and everything. But in most cases, you know, they're taking on some water at any time when it rains. But the next step on this, now that we have identified the areas that have defects, and these are grouped, obviously, you know, in a certain parts of the city, the older portions of the city, you know, you have more of these defects than you do in others. Our next step is to send out camera crews and do internal TV inspection of the sewers in those areas to determine what type of condition that the internal sewer is in. So the main line, 8-inch sewer lines, and see what they look like. Because you have a lot of options when you're rehabbing sewer, because if the sewer pipe itself is not collapsed, it's just leaking. You can go through and you can pull in a fiberglass liner, that seals it up, makes it impervious to water, and we go back in, we cut the services out. If you have collapse in the sewer line, generally what we'll do is a pointer pair, so we'll only fix about an eight-foot section of that line, and then we'll pull a liner through it rather than digging up and replacing an entire line, because it's a lot cheaper, you get a lot more, you know, work done for the same amount of money. So, you know, it is a process and we're moving along, I think, quite well. Like I said, when we get done, you'll have the report, everything will be identified, you'll have recommendations from us. We will assist you in coming up with language if you decide you want to do something with an ordinance or just a letter to go out to homeowners and addressing all these defects. And then you'll have a project that's designed to allow you to then make a decision on how you want to go forward with repairing the significant sewer defects that have been found.
I think one of the highlights too, didn't, when you public works get a, you've got now where everything is located and you've got pictures, so if you need to take live, that's really going to help.
Yeah, we've got, we've surveyed, we GPS surveyed every manhole in your system with the exception of about 15 that were covered up with asphalt or something, so we weren't able to actually find those. We'll do an exact location of those with the TV cameras. So we have that, we also inspected every single manhole, so there's pictures inside of every single manhole in the system as well. So all of that is, forms a database for you all to be able to look, and as you inspect those in the future, be able to look back and see how the condition of those manholes are changing over time.
And this is pretty, really important for our citizens to know because I didn't have a clue that we had that kind of situation, so it's good to know, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to save us a lot of money in the long run.
Yeah, and we found one large defect down at the bridge that every time the water got up, it's taken almost a tremendous amount of water, and y'all already gotten that fixed. So, it's, so, but you should, you know, ultimately this will lead to you being able to get those feet closed down and reach up a capacity at your wastewater plant, which then you can allocate towards future development, you know, if somebody's coming in. So, the other project we've got going under construction right now is with David Edley and Isengard again, I'm sure everybody's seen that. You may have gotten a complaint about traffic or something, nobody, I know I do that, if it's not one of my projects, you know, I like to complain about. I can't believe they've got the road all blocked off right there. But I hope everyone has been able to see, did everybody get to see one of the coupons that got cut out of the existing line? You know, I'm talking about the piece of pipe, and you could see what it looked like on the inside, so that's the pipes that you're getting to replace. You're getting to go back in with this PVC, that's actually caused by iron bacteria, that occurs in cast iron pipe. That causes discoloration of water that you might have gotten phone calls about in the past. Other things, lower water pressure, less volume. So going in with a new PVC pipe, this pipe will last you 100 years, it's got 100-year life on it, is what the PVC industry says. It's good, it's good material, I've been up there, looking at the job, everything they're doing as far as installing the pipe, everything looks good. When I was there, they were sweeping the gravel back into the ditch and everything, seemed to be keeping a tidy job site. And talking with Les and Derek, they said that, you know, they're doing a good job of keeping everything tidied up in the evenings. I don't know of any significant complaints about the construction except a little disruption, you know, with traffic or, you know, when water had service, had to be cut off to make a connection, so.
Are we doing anything as far as like mapping, what we're replacing, just for like future generations long after we're gone, so they can see?
That's part of the beauty.
Yeah, that just kind of.
Yeah, so we, so we provide you asbills on everything, we take the measurements from when it's installed, and then we readjust the construction plans to show where it actually exists in the road, the material that's put in, where all your connections, where all your service lines and everything are, and all that gets measured. So, you know, if there's a valve here, you know, and there's not another bend or something, they'll say, you know, 85 feet from that valve, you know, water service. 100 feet from the last one, water service, so that somebody can go back in the future and be able to look at those plans. Or if we can take that information and you can database it into, you know, a GIS system to make it a little easier to find.
And I think we're already finding additions to our own map, so.
We are, we're finding a lot of things, we're finding lines on that map that are not correct, things that were thought to be six-inch lines that were 8-inch, 8-inch lines that are actually six-inch lines, and making adjustments to that as we go along as well.
This is going to be good for generations to come, which is wonderful, we never had this, which is really great.
Yeah.
Any questions about the line, do you think? Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we move, I have two and three for new business to the next agenda voting, if these, I guess, they want to.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is our special permit, so we'll let, where the rank?
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, what?
Motion to approve them. Motion to approve.
Wait, wait, stop, go ahead.
So you don't want, you don't want, you just want to go ahead and approve?
We read the permit sheet.
Okay, all right, motion to approve, second, any discussion on that?
I have something to add. And the school wanted to see if we could waive the fee since it was a school event, so if you guys are okay with that, I just wanted to put that out there. On the special, I'm probably thinking 10 minutes.
Can we not wait?
That's what I'm.
I'll amend my motion, motion to approve permits and waive the fee.
So we'll waive both?
Can we?
Both fees because one's the church and one's the school.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's it, you may go, thank you very much. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. All right, and we're going back to you.
Should be your report. Actually, what should be is like, what's that called? The special one. It's 25 hour.
So mine is very short this week, we've had kind of fun things that have happened. We had a, as you all probably saw, we had a music video that was produced here for two country music artists. It will be released sometime later this month supposedly, and we had 20 extras that were acquired from the county extras area. So that was, and they had, seemed to have a really good time, so that's a lot of fun, it brings a little more money in, we'll have publicity. They had local catering for this, and local supplies that they had to post off here, so.
Where was it actually?
Well, it was all within town, actually. They did some, some buildings around town.
Not the bridge?
No, they didn't, well, and the interesting thing is, they were going to use the bridge, the T-Dot had already paid it. But when they got here, they realized that one of their equipment was so tall, it would not fit, and then it was very heavy too. So they just didn't want to take the risk of putting all that heavy machinery in there, so they shot it different place. But I think it's, it's going to be very nice, and it's going to be sort of different. It's not, you know, ran over my dog, took a beer and went for a ride away, it's kind of a serious subject.
It's like real country music.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. All right, so.
That's not insulting at all.
No, I'm just kidding, most definitely there's a lot of fun, but now this is, it's a more serious subject than you really see sometimes in these. Interesting to see how they do it so small. Sometimes we take offense at things that aren't meant that way. Okay, we have an extra point, it's from the city, please.
No official report today, we do have a couple of ordinances for first reading, but we'll take that up in official business unless anybody has any questions for me.
All right, thank you. Our city recorder?
I have nothing official to share, if there's any questions.
Chief Davis, are you out there?
Hello?
Hey.
I don't think I have anything to report, guys, y'all have my monthly report there, as always, and if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask with me.
I would like to compliment y'all, we had a lady that passed away, who was 92, was one of the first female officers here. And they did a special police escort during the funeral in this black ceremony, we want to. Thank you.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Public works, there you go, that's it.
I'm here, any questions?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Water sewer, Derek?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Jones has brought you up today on everything, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to.
Thank you. Water plant, Rusty?
Everything from the clean out, which we just went over the bills, everything seems to be functioning like it should. So I think we're in good shape for the short term on that, we'll just have to keep an eye on it, not let that happen again. I mean, that's, I don't, that's your thing.
Yeah, well, so going forward, what we're doing to prevent it?
Yeah, we're going, the plan right now is, is to do routine inspections on our own to the extent that we can ourselves, like maybe a depth gauge, keep an eye on it periodically, you know, see if it's building back up. Or another thing we can do, if we see it building back up, it may be how the divers come in like in a maintenance capacity, maybe every three years, something like that, to do a little work here and there. We can't, we can't take the chance of letting that build up again like it did.
All right, thank you. Please, water.
Everything's good, wastewater plant, unless you shout out some questions, I'll be happy to try and answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Fire department, chief?
Yes ma'am, I gave y'all a written report for our monthly calls and also another sheet. Only had a chance to look at it, but we're up to 187 calls through seven months. That puts us on, on the way to 320 calls this year, that would be about 70 more than we've ever had unless things slow down. The bridge holds up? And why do you roll the number of calls? On the bid opening, that's in new business, I'll address that then. The only thing I want y'all to know was, there was 35,000 budgeted for a used pickup truck. We discussed here internally, some of the other supervisors, that possibly get a state bid truck for that. According to Wilson County Motors, General Motors has over 1,000 requests for a state bid truck, they're making 89 available. Ford and Dodge are both 10,000 over the amount budgeted, so I would like y'all's permission to look for a used truck and go ahead and pull the trigger on it, they won't hold one.
That's what you're budgeting for, right, chief?
35.
I mean, it's in your budget.
So up to 35?
Yes.
We've still got to approve.
Yeah, I'm saying, just once you find one, we'll get it approved for you.
They won't hold it this way.
Yeah, he's saying, we want to go and pre-approve it, so that way he can pull the trigger.
I made the motion to allow the chief to spend up to $35,000 of his budget to go ahead and purchase a used pickup truck.
Second, you have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, what I would prefer, but it's upper, so. When we get to the bid open, I'll just.
Use card mark it right now, I'm ready to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Move on from the CFO to the other branch, unfinished business.
I've got a question, I know you got an email that's saying they came in and loaded their budget in to the computer.
I'm sorry, what?
The email about Scott.
Oh, he was going to, but then I said, go ahead and do it, but when I came back, he hadn't done it, so I don't know.
Was he here to do it, so he chose to do it?
He was supposed to do that, yes.
Was there some kind of an issue with it, or?
He wanted $100 for eight hours of work, $100 an hour, and I guess Julie, what Julie told me when I came back, he wasn't good. He felt bad charging the city for that, so he showed her how to do it.
Did we say he want to do it?
She's going to slowly do it, yeah. It's just a matter of just keying in numbers, basically, it's a data entry.
Okay, I was just wondering, I know we came to load it in, we need to have it loaded in.
Well, we do, and she's working.
Eight hours of data entry on the truck.
Well, that's what he estimated, yeah. At $100 an hour, so Julie's got her one for me, yeah.
And then we're now busy someone working on that, so.
M-Test can come and help us with that too, we called him, about somebody who is coming in to help us with that. Okay, the next is unfinished business, we have reading of Budget Amendment 20220804-1. This is to increase government expenditures for the, and the city park expenditures. We'll let our attorney speak to this.
Sure, of course, we talked about this last time, this is to allocate more raise for our town lifeguards up to $10 an hour. What is it currently?
725.
720, from 725 an hour. Instead of hiring an assistant pool manager and to authorize the pool director to select an assistant director from one of the lifeguards to be compensated at $11 an hour. In addition, we hired the codes enforcement official, and that's $800 per month. So the total allocation in expenditures is $9,600 for general government expenditures and an increase of $17,000 for city park expenditures. I take everybody in authorship, so if there's any terminology that I didn't get right about these job titles or anything else, I'm more than open to suggestions.
Thank you. Yes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And second, any discussion on that?
I just want to go ahead and notate that I'm all for raising the hourly wage, all for the pool director and everything we talked about on that. I'll be voting against this basically because I'm not for the codes official as far as it goes, but just want to let that out. For the other two, because it was all long ago, so.
Well, we can, we can separate this out if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, I know y'all are going to vote for it, but I just wanted to vocalize that.
If we separate it, would you vote for one, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd vote for the first two, absolutely.
There's a motion, I'll table to approve it as written, so.
Yeah, so I guess I can amend it, I'd like to amend it, I mean, you can vote it down, but I'll motion amend it to voting A and B together and voting C separately.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, voting A and B together and C separately, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll give courtesy of a second.
Okay, second, any discussion on that? This would be separating out the pool from the codes person. Discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are going to separate them out and vote on them, okay. So, we'll start with A and B, which has to do with the pool, the lifeguard pay and $100 more for the assistant.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we approve that one. Then the next one would be the C part.
Motion to approve.
This is for the codes person.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve, running to the codes person, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, cheers, thank you. All right. So the next is the first reading.
This is the Cordell Hole Bridge ordinance, and we talked about enshrining the weight and height limitations for the Cordell Hole Bridge, so we can make sure there are no cracks or anything else that might shut down the bridge and affect downtown businesses. Again, no pride in authorship, so if anybody takes issue with how I phrase this ordinance, I'm open to suggestions. Way of read is no vehicle having more than two axles, or any vehicle, trailer or tractor, whose height, including any part of the load, exceeds 14 and a half feet, or whose weight, including any part of the load, exceeds 26,000 pounds or 13 tons, utilize the Cordell Hole Bridge to enter or exit the town park. This is a classy misdemeanor with, which carries a fine of not more than $50.
And just for the record, this is ordinance CO20220804-1, right here, motion to.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, second, any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Did we deal with the South Carthage?
I have talked to. I have talked to, uh...
I mean, have they voted in order since?
Well, I have talked to the incoming mayor, uh, and he's going to bring it up the next meeting, yes.
And the way this is written is that, I mean, if anybody comes into the town of Carthage from South Carthage, it's still amenable to violate it.
I understand that, but if they don't see it on that side of the bridge, they won't hold the violation until they cross the bridge.
Yes, we've given it to South Carthage.
That's what I'm getting at.
That's all we're...
They can't hurt it in the middle of the bridge.
Right, and they're going to, they're going to bring this up at their next meeting, so, yes, sir.
I question our authority to do that on a state, which, well, I understand is a state bridge. I don't think we own the bridge. We never have any pass unless that's changed. And number two, enforcement seems to be a nightmare, unless Chief Davis can come up with some scales and whatnot.
Well, we voted last time to do this, so, uh, I mean, we can rescind that, but that was...
Well, same one here.
Well, it's first read.
Yes, it is. It's first read. It's the same one here, so I think it's good for us to go and tell you kind of what we, we discussed it and we did, we do have the authority to do it. Um, we did check on it.
Can we have that in writing?
Can we have that in writing?
Well, it is a state bridge, but the way the ordinance is written, you can't, of course, regulate property that's not yours, but you can regulate people coming into and going out of, of your town, and that's the way it's written.
So to me, the ordinance needs to be written, uh, main street from the end of the bridge. The ordinance starts there, because otherwise we're trying to regulate state property.
The way it's written is all we're, um, all we're regulating is whether people can utilize that property to enter or exit the town of Carthage, so, uh, we're not regulating state property.
We, we kind of run this by T-DOT and, uh, as long as we don't put something physical on the bridge, we're okay, is what you're saying.
I think Sam has another question that he was asking as far as regulating, like how is Chief Davis going to go forward on it? And, um, I think, I think a lot of it's just a lot of visual, because we're not going to scales. It's just got, it's basically the main thing is axles, like, so we're two, so we're over two axles, we're going to see that and say, hey. And I don't think we're trying to fine anybody. I didn't, I don't really care for the fine on it. I think we're just trying to ask, hey, you keep, keep your big vehicles off here nicely? And I think most people would just go ahead and do that, especially because it's, most of it's local companies coming across. There's going to be some that aren't, but, you know.
They're going to like the way we sent out the letter and they started parking in their yards.
Uh, I don't think it necessarily will be like that, but I, I get your point.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it, my piece?
Well, I have the same concern as you, councilman, which is why we phrased it this way. And it's really just the best that we can do, I think.
Yeah, legitimate concerns, I think, so.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until we actually see South Carthage's ordinance, because I don't think it's going to be very effective. They get on the bridge in South Carthage, they get off on our side. Well, guess what? You violated our ordinance, but it's okay on that side of the bridge. That's going to cause a lot of problems. I think we need to table this until we get together and get their ordinance put together so it's all matching and...
Well, it's, we're in the middle of the motion, so you can't motion.
Send them in the motion.
We, we did send them this ordinance, and that's what he's going to bring up.
Well, he doesn't have it approved yet, though. He's got to go to his council, definitely.
Let me, let me, here, I'm only table this if it's not something that's just going to table, so it dies. We need to get working on this fast, and there's, your, your downtown concerns on it, and we had a big scare that happened. And the economy down there just, it will get trashed if it's not. So, I'm fine with table, and I think you have a good point, but I don't want this to be drawn out so that, like, if, if there's, um, if that's really progressing to where this could happen next month or at their council meeting, totally fine. One of us will have to act first for the other one to act first. So if it sounds like they're going to do it, let's do it. Um, so...
But we choose it, we do need this downtown, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I just don't want that.
I agree, I understand, but saying it would be foolish for us to act this, and then there are variables for what I'm doing.
I mean, we can do, I mean, we can also, because we got to read this twice. We're going to do two readings of this, right?
That's right.
Okay, so we can go ahead and, and read this, and if they don't approve it, we can shut it down the next ordinance reading and maybe come up with something better that they agree upon.
And it may be beneficial for us to go ahead and pass it on first, so that gives them the signal, they can go ahead and do it, too.
We've done that before. We've decided to vote it down the second time, because it just didn't work out. So it just passes the first time, you know. And, and I agree. We, I mean, they need to be in line with it, but someone's going to have to pull the trigger first, and so we might, we're already working on it, we might as well.
I don't, I don't disagree, but in my opinion, it is, the state should pull the trigger. If they don't want five axes on it, they should put the signs up. That's my opinion.
State don't, state, state's recommendation on, T-DOT's recommendation on Carthage when they do the bluff project was to go through eleven. State don't care about our downtown. We got, we, we live here, we got to take care of our downtown businesses, we got to take care of our downtowns, we got to take care of our citizens. We need to pull the trigger. We need to act. We, we wait for T-DOT, we're waiting forever.
Yeah, the last time...
T-DOT's already got the bridge marked. It's not forever, it's done.
Last time, I can I say something? The last time that they, uh, the traffic went across the bridge of big trucks, and there were sitting like three or four on the bridge, because I was sitting by the bluff. Google maps directs them across there. Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
They had no choice but to go across there. They don't cross the park school, but they were directed to go across that bridge, and that's why some police officers in South Carthage stopped it, but they were directed to go that way.
Yeah.
And the good thing is...
We're in a crisis as far as, uh, you know, our signage is not appropriate, that you can't do that.
Yeah, it's not. And that's something that we're going to talk about here shortly, is we got to have the sign to do it. And then, and Sam, you didn't get to see it, but they're, got a big old picture of an entire house going across that bridge the day after they opened it. An entire house someone was moving across. So we got to do something, like we can't do nothing.
Was that a store building or a house?
It was a house. It was a full-fledged house.
That's a storage.
HO, USC, house, on the bridge.
Okay, so any further discussion on, uh, would you read back the motion?
It was to approve, yes. We didn't do an official, okay, table.
Alright, so any further discussion on, we have a motion to approve, a second, any further discussion? Um, first reading, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Uh-huh.
To oppose.
Okay, well, the majority still.
I was just telling you.
Okay, no, no, I can, alright, second.
That's all we're doing.
Alright, you got it. So, moving on then. Then we have, uh, an update on applications. We had, she had two applications, but we got an email from one of the ladies that she couldn't be here tonight, but we do have the other lady here who has applied. Do you, would you mind coming up? You can sit on the front bench there, but we'd like to meet you.
Motion to suspend Roberts' orders, for this, uh, second. This is Geno.
Okay. Motion to suspend, second. Any discussion on that?
I mean, here we go again, which we, last time we did this, we actually had private interviews with other tougher people and stuff like that.
No, would you like to take a break and tell, private?
I think that'd be...
I think she would prefer that.
I think that'd be the best thing for her, for you to...
Do I have a motion to, to take a fifteen-minute break?
We're in the middle of a motion, so we need to vote on this motion first.
Yes.
Suspend the rules.
So we have a motion to suspend, please. Second?
There's a second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, um, so do we want to take a break for a few minutes and have a...
I'll just say this, I mean, we've always, I mean, we did that that one time, but we've always interviewed on camera so the public can see what we're interviewing for. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to embarrass anybody, but it's a public job.
I wasn't saying you would do that. I'm just saying, the last time we did that, if we brought our recommendation in.
Yeah. What do y'all want to do, Tom? Okay.
Do I have a motion to take a break?
You want to ask a question now, or do you want a break with, I mean, I'm just saying, it's a public meeting.
Is that what you're saying?
It's a public meeting, and I just, I think it's...
Because when we did, Mr. Scott, who was in private rooms.
We did five people.
I just again.
I question whether we have authority to do that with two applications on one year.
I don't think we have the authority to tell Smith County insider to turn off their camera during a break. They're, they're, it's the First Amendment, they have to do that.
Well, I'd ask that.
This probably needs a special session or something.
Guess we only have one application here.
Well, the other lady, well, you want to read the email she sent, please. She basically says it would really come down to whether the town could match what the job she's been offered. And I think, you read it yourself, without magic.
I don't know that counts.
This lady, I think...
That's not that right.
I believe, she stated that you would take what the supervisor's saying, okay. I, I don't think we're going to ask any embarrassing questions, but I mean...
I don't have a single embarrassing question.
Well, I'm more aware of the position she's already in.
Yeah, so maybe we just don't say your name. That's my question.
Okay, we don't have to say a name.
Let's just don't say your name, that would help. We got it right, okay?
So, that's, oh, if I'm...
We'll, we'll call her, uh...
Mrs. Smith.
Mrs. Smith, there you go. So, um, we've seen your resume, and we've, we've seen a letter, there's a cover letter, quite extensive, quite a bit of experience in finance and HR. Does anyone have a question they would like to ask?
How well are you working under stress?
Um, it's, can be at times, yes, um, with financial closing, when you're in closing. So, yes, there's times that it's a stressful environment, but when you're in human resources, every day is stressful. You know, you never know what's going to happen that day.
Do you have any experience with working with government?
Um, other than just through, um, attorneys and courts and stuff with the legal system pertaining to, uh, the payroll rules or garnishment rules or stuff like that, but other than like a municipality, no.
Would you work with a major company as...
Yeah, I've worked, yeah, I've worked with a couple of corporate companies, and I worked for one.
It's mainly been payroll, has it been, uh, budgeting and, uh, you know, basically creating spreadsheet? Have you worked with, you know, spreadsheets as far as, you know, profit-loss statements, um, B and L, you know, all that, everything as far as...
Yeah, with, you know, in Excel, and then the budget for each department or whatever with, in HR when we have a compensation budgets.
Um, are you, are you willing to, um, go through any further training to learn a lot about this position? And are you a good beginning learner for...
I think so. I mean, I think so, but yes, I'm, I'm willing to, I'm open to any kind of training that it would take.
There is, uh, your training, I think we had mentioned that to you, you're okay with that, yes.
And you're okay with the current salary as far as a officer position, a supervisor position?
Yes, I am. It means a lot to come back to my hometown, so, you know.
Not too far away, I think you said?
You don't live but a few blocks away. No, I, I just live several streets over, so, I mean, you know, sometimes money's not everything, it's about being home.
Any, any more questions about this?
Well, I'd like to say that I, I know, told her, she's very professional in what she does, so I'll be abstaining from this, well, because of the... to have for her, she, she's very good at what she does. Well, then she's working for Cracker Barrel right now.
Okay.
You were Cracker Barrel?
I didn't.
I'm not supposed to say. I did, didn't I?
Hell.
Thanks, Sam. I'm not supposed to get questions.
Yes, I work in your financial department.
And you touched people, now, guess what? Thanks, Steve. But you're saying you do the budgets for Cracker Barrel?
No, not, not the complete budgets, no.
Payroll and finance, yeah.
To the overall, correct?
Yeah, it's because...
Not just one, one of them.
Well, that is the corporate office.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
I think it's just definitely, you know, a lot of the learning curve for you, and I don't think that's, it's not a qualifier for the learning curve. I mean, we all have to start somewhere, we all have to learn something somewhere. And, you know, it's a position that we really need right now, um, but, you know, there is, there's been four?
Yes.
CMFOs so far, so we're letting you know that upfront, that you walk in and do something that can get pretty stressful. And so we're not trying to hide that from you. We're trying to let you know that upfront. I mean, we'd love to get someone in here, but there's a lot of stress involved with a lot of day-to-day, and, um, girls up here are great to work with, they're team, they're team players, um, you know, but I just want, you know, you can get definitely a lot of help out of them, but, um, they're awesome, yeah. Anyway.
Alright, so the other question.
I have another question. Like, uh, for instance, if you have to go and take some credit, our courses for this, um, you know, like a police officer would have to do the same thing. So if we send you to school to do such and such and such and such, what do you feel like, you know, are you going to quit after all that?
I don't plan on it. I plan on retiring from this position if I obtain it.
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, any other, any other questions?
A motion to go back to Roberts' rules?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, do I hear a motion to...
Motion to hire Kerry Holder with a CMFO position?
Okay, so, uh, okay, uh, do I hear a second?
It's hard not to do it.
I'm so sorry, like, I'm not trying to say that.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
Um, I think this looks very impressive. However, I think that the last two CMFOs have been accountants, um, with, uh, lots of experience hands up the city needs, and it's, we've really seen an improvement. And what's going on in the city finances, having an accountant, so I would, I would like to see us look a little bit further.
A little bit look.
Yeah. I know, but I really think we need to try, I don't think we need to go backwards on this. I don't know. I know we're in a pinch, but that's not a reason to go backwards.
Yeah, but we've looked and looked and looked.
I'm, I'm not hired, I don't want to hire her because we're in a pinch. I mean, we do need to get one in, but I'm not trying to hire someone in a pinch. I never hire anyone in a pinch. I'd rather just suffer. I think she's got a good resume. I think she has a lot to learn.
She has a good resume.
I think she's got a lot to learn, but I also don't think, and she got some big shoes to fill, and I think you're absolutely right. Last two CMFOs we had were great. They were great. But I also think that it's worth giving a shot here, see how she does. And, um, I mean, she wants it, she's after it, and sometimes passion supersede requirements.
And she cares about our town. I appreciate that. I mean, I really do. That's a big part of it. And wants to do good things for our town is what I'm hearing.
I'm just saying, if I, if there's some certain positions that if someone could give me a chance, I wouldn't have excelled in it. And there were places where...
So you're saying trial basis?
Yeah, so, you know, and I mean, it is, I mean...
Only two, but the city's finances are, are pretty big and pretty, and this is mostly, um, accounts manager, HR, payroll.
Yeah, yeah. And it is, and it is, and it's, it's somewhat overlaps, and there's some places that absolutely doesn't overlap, and you're correct in that. But, again, there's, there's a lot of the same terminology. It's in the same spectrum. It's, there's going to be some different variables in that spectrum, but it's still in the same spectrum.
And the beauty of this position is you're going to have, whoever gets it has twelve months of training to learn this, plus we have financial advisors from M. Task that are willing to come out and work with folks. It's not like they're just walking in wildly. They're going to be supported by a lot of people.
And yes, she does have a year, or the person we would hire does have a year, but we are already, we're, we're behind. So there'd be a lot of going right in and needing to catch up, because we're behind.
Well, let me put it this way, the other, the other lady that has applied has quite a bit of business and accounting. She wants eighty thousand.
We're going to run and... I don't think either one of them would really be what we need at this point in time. I think they have great resources.
What would you, who would you, I mean, no one else has applied, so what do we do? We, we have to...
How long would we wait? For what we have right now?
We, we... We pretty soon have to have somebody come. We, we've got a lady who's helping it, but she can only come in a couple nights, so we, you know. Now, we don't, we need someone who's here.
We're going to see pretty fast.
We've seen the difference. We've seen the difference.
We're going to see pretty fast.
Someone that is an accountant. We've seen what they do for the city and how they are able to do this well.
A big part of this is also the grant part. Yes, sir.
The, the question I have is, we've got this other CFO that's coming in two nights a week. Is it not a fact that they have to have a letter from the comptroller to work for two city entities at one time?
She is listed with us. She...
Do you have a letter from the comptroller saying she can do that, is what I'm saying?
The comptroller has her, that lady listed as our CMFO grant.
Are we not supposed to have a letter on file? That's what I was informed with that letter on file.
Well, I don't know who informed you of that, but I'll call in the morning to get one from you, because we don't...
Well, that's, I think that's required.
He, she, she has to be listed with them, and she is listed.
Well, I'd say just back to where we're at.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, though, is the number of stuff that hasn't been done since we've had this actual CMFO in here.
I'm sorry, what?
Two different things.
Okay.
Well, we got a motion and a second.
Okay, uh, is there any further discussion on this? Let me do the broad questions, certainly.
Councilwoman Knuckle. Councilman Babcock.
I'll abstain.
Councilman Evil.
Yes.
Councilman Peters, I'm abstaining, Councilman Petty.
Due to the fact that she don't have the municipal, I'm gonna vote no for now.
Vice Mary East.
Well, none of them have the municipal.
Vice Mary?
Yes.
So, what do we have here?
That's a two, two abstain, so that'd make a tiebreaker.
Two, two abstain?
So, that two no's, two yeses and an abstain?
Is there any way you're abstaining, I mean, you feel?
I don't think it's a real problem.
It can, yeah, it can, um, and if he, I think that's the right call for him, if he has a personal, he knows personally, that's the.
I'm going to vote to give her a chance because I feel she's passionate about this and wanting to work, but if it doesn't work out, it won't work out, right? I mean.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm behind you a hundred percent.
Thank you very much, and I feel your passion will accomplish a lot, and that you're willing to do, I just, sometimes you have, like you say, councilwoman, you have to give somebody a chance.
There's a lot of people that I hired that I gave a chance, and I'm so happy I did, and there's some people that were extremely qualified, that I couldn't get around them fast enough, and I'm not saying that's how it always is, but I just think sometimes you just gotta give someone a chance and give it, give it a shot, see what happens, you know? Doesn't happen, I mean, gone through four.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we won't keep you, I'm not saying that, I won't say that now.
We won't make this work.
We've been here to know this for a while, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate you, we'll talk more. If you want to go down, or if you abstain, you can say, uh.
Stick around.
I'll stay.
You might abstain, you're used to it.
Okay, here we go, um, all right. Oh, shoot, this was, yes, we didn't talk about that.
Uh, I'll motion to table this until next.
That's fine.
See if that, that work.
Motion to table, do I hear a second today?
Which one we table?
Number four.
I'd like to do something different, you're loving.
I'll present my motion.
I'd like to motion to take this off the table and not have it back on, or we don't leave bathrooms to the performance hall.
Well, if you have a, if you have, second, if you have people using it, you do by law, yes, sir?
I'll mention, I don't know how many meetings ago, might have been a decade or so ago, about seeing the, um, the occupancy rate, so to speak, of how often it is used, to see if we can justify this kind of money, and I'm, to my knowledge, we never really saw that, but I might have overlooked it.
Yeah, well, we can, we can, we can move on from that then.
And so, you know, we got a motion second, so if we're in the discussion for this, here's where I stand on this, I think we, I won't say it again, I think we need to get rid of this building, okay? But if we're gonna keep this building, we need to keep it so it can be usable, I don't think there's a point in keeping a building that we ain't using, first off, so let's get rid of it, but now we're gonna keep it, but we ain't gonna do anything with it, so I don't wanna see this, I just don't see any sense in any of this.
It could not be like, it's not being, see, we're talking about the performance hall, it's not being used, we need to make the public aware that this building is here.
Yes.
You know, a lot of people don't realize that they could use the building.
We'd, we'd love to see art shows, music, all kinds of things.
You see what I'm saying, that they're not aware.
We have the courthouse playhouse, we've got the Ag Center, we've got the city council, I mean, the, the.
What?
Well, Chamber Commerce, that all have these in them.
Rose Building.
And the Rose Building, which is a private office. I don't see that we need a fifth.
Big. Agreed.
And the building is being used.
Uh, that's what I was gonna say, the building's being used by two entities.
It's being used those areas, but yeah.
And, and you can see them, the only spot, the thing we're talking about is this little performance area right there, so they, we got, there's a lease that's controlling those spots right now, so we have to go out with a lease that we can't just change the leasing midstream and say, hey, guess what, we're gonna put bathrooms in here and we're starting out a part of your building that you're renting.
Well, they're not renting that part, the lease doesn't, the performance hall has never been leased out either in, uh, in both the entities.
I s, I think we saw the plans on that, did we not have the plans on that?
I'm just saying, we're picking and choosing nonprofits that we're supporting by leasing it out for these, and there's a lot of nonprofits in this town, a lot of them are raising money by themselves voluntarily for these things, but we're propping up a couple nonprofits, two great nonprofits.
It, it's not out there that we have this building, like, it was just like.
But it might be, it might be more beneficial to sell this building to these nonprofits possibly, let them work it out and get it off our hands, and maybe we can invest in something like, hey, we got some upcoming, uh, road going on, we may have to change some parking layouts possible, we may need to buy some property for parking lot, there's all kinds of things that we could be using this to help more people in the town than this, than just some specific areas, and it also might help these nonprofits out as well, to be able to have more control in their building and put more investment in their buildings instead of having to ask the city on.
That's it, we got, we got, you can see them there, we got a spot there, too.
And they do, those areas do invest in that building all of the time.
Yeah, so, give them a return, and, and if they're putting, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
And one thing we're forgetting, the city stores stuff in that building, they use it for storage, we forgot that.
They have asked us not to take away that.
And they wanted, so, yeah, and we don't need to make decisions tonight, but if we wanna get rid of it, we need to find other storage as well.
But I mean, this keeps coming back on the agenda, 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 let's move on from it.
And we can still.
Vote it up or down.
We're a hundred people without that.
Yeah, but here's the other thing, too.
They would be ashamed of us beating a dead horse more than once.
And I, and I'll.
We're doing it.
And I'll say this as well, if, if these two entities are putting money into this building and we decide we wanna sell it, that's something we should probably knock out because they put that investment in there, probably knock off the sales price.
So we are keeping it up, keeping at a good value, increasing the value.
Let's, let's, we can just, please.
Okay, so the motion is to just.
Remove it.
Remove it completely.
Forget bathrooms altogether, so, uh, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
For the record, I second it.
Okay. All righty, um.
I've never seen you that glasses on, man, you're just like a whole.
First time I've been with that glasses, forty seven years.
I kept wondering what's different.
I kept, my cat was taking off, and I, I, every, the Dr. Thals are amazing, I've got twenty twenty vision.
One?
Wow, okay.
You look younger, Sam.
Okay. Uh, the next item, discussion, T-Dot poll for Y'all Hall Bridge, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this is, and it was actually supposed to be polling sign, so if I can amend that to say poll and sign.
Do you mean the one with the way limit and stuff on it?
Yeah, the way limit sign, yeah, so.
Well, you just get the sign.
Yeah.
No poll.
Okay, and that's what I wanna discuss, 'cause I think I'll probably line up with you on that, as much as I'd like to do a poll and get things, I think it's gonna take, for, the beauty of the bridge, great bridge, and also, we're gonna go through a lot more T-Dot if we get a poll, and it's gonna be a lot more of a headache, so I think that we need to have a good sign, a good size sign that just says, hey, like, cut it out, and, you know, it's big and, big and bright, and people see it, and they know, hey, that's going on, I don't think, I honestly don't think, just relooking at this several times, I don't think we need a poll either.
Well, man, you're talking a pole that holds a sign, not a pole to say.
It was a pole, we were talking about putting a pole.
Across the top.
That had, like, had chains that come down, so you hit that height limit and kinda knock it, you know, uh, and some lasers and stuff came into it, I don't know, it was like crazy.
We had some ideas of a T.
But, yeah, but we just, I think.
I went out on vacation that.
Yeah, we decided against the lasers, and, and we would have, we're talking about a poll, but, you know, I went around, I looked at it, and I was, I don't think we need a poll either, I think we just put a sign up and go with it, so.
Okay.
My motion is, I don't, I don't think we need a motion.
No.
But we need to make sure this is a decent sign whenever it happens, so, and that could fall.
Why don't, why don't you make the motion to bring the planning to the sign in front of the council before it's installed?
Motion to bring the planning of the sign in front of.
Actually, you plan not to go to the planning commission.
But I mean, I was trying to say.
Well, no, but once it's, once it's done, I think, before it's installed. I'll be honest with you, I, I do feel like that's just something that they're good at doing, is making signs on that, and we probably don't even need to be involved, we just need to say that on the ground.
That was your idea.
Okay.
It just needs to be loud, and we can say it's loud.
Can we move on, please, then? Unless there's something else you want to.
No, I don't have, I don't have a motion on that, so.
All right, so we'll go to new business, yes, sir?
A motion to approve item number one. I'm sure we'd love to see if the chief bid.
Second.
I might, I might let you know that's about twenty thousand more than.
That's probably what we have here now, we can discuss what you need to discuss, Chief.
Chief, if you want, Billson.
Yes, we got four bids, I notified at least twelve manufacturers, I think thirteen got notified, bids came in at two fifty-six, four fifty-four, three fifty-four, eight fifty-four, seventy-five, which is one we recommend, that's the list of stuff the low bid did not meet, you have a copy of that?
So it did not meet the bid requirement?
Did not meet the bid requirement.
The second lowest one met the bid requirement?
Second met every one.
And that's gonna put us in, what, about twenty thousand more?
Roughly twenty thousand more, I don't have an exact figure because upcoming development and that's fluctuating, so, as far as what they told me, but it's roughly twenty thousand.
I'd say we have a choice, but to make a motion to approve.
We're ready to vote.
We just gotta vote, we're out of time, we wanna prove it.
Yeah.
So there's any other discussions or questions?
I'd say we go, well, the chief recommend that, recommend, he knows what he's doing.
So we've got that motion on the floor.
And second, just ready for a vote?
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sign the resolution in the letter to CDVG and move forward, thank you very much.
I'll hold by the manufacturer and the vendor, thank y'all.
Well, Chief, we should have been different.
We thank you.
We have already approved both special permits, we'll go on to Third Avenue West Futuro Alley and paving, Mr. Evil?
Okay, so, we had the, the Futuro Alley water line went through, and they did, you know, just patchwork paving, but now it's like, we had the patchwork paving, and then on top of it, we sh, we sh, threw some stripes on it, and it's not like finished pavement, and there's, yeah, there's brand-new stripes up there.
Futuro Alley?
From, it's on Third Avenue, but it's from, that's, the, the project was Futuro Alley, but it went all the way down to Rojas, all the way over to Futuro Alley and back.
That part will not get paved, what you see is what you're gonna get right there.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, so, like, we kinda have this patchwork thing going on with parking spots that are kinda crooked, like, you got parking, um, what do you call them, the, the tire bumpers that don't match up with our stripes, you got, um.
Are they angle?
No, they're not angle, they're straight in, they're, they don't match up, they're, everything just got restripped over it, but it's just kind of a patchwork, it just doesn't, it doesn't look good for.
Are we talking about the main street down the water?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about just Third Avenue, now, all the way down Third Avenue, and then all back in Futuro Alley, that's just, it's just basically, it's patch pavement, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the kind of car, right?
Yeah, that's, so, but, and I get that, but then we went and painted stripes over it without doing the final paving, which we'll get into, so.
That's not gonna be paid in the main street paving job.
No, not the main street, I'm just talking about, do we wanna talk about getting that, since we, we're done with that line, that is a twenty twenty-two line, so we could take, take that road, take that line, and take it off the, um, that has been approved, we've got however many years on it, for, for a while.
I'm not following.
What, what I recommend, I should make, recommend, a day, so I'd like to make, is allow the streets department to determine which roads the city need to be paved first, which ones look worse, and give us a list of those so we can start going from.
Home's losing, y'all there watching.
Well, our original plan was that we, we wanna, we wanna fix, follow me, and I apologize if I'm explaining this wrong, we wanna fix what's underneath the pavement before we pave, that was our original plan, okay, so what we've done is we fixed what's under the pavement, and now, we're ready to pave, but now, we're skipping that step, and that was what I was under the impression on the first, because we, and then the next thing is we're fixing everything under Main Street, and after that, what are we gonna do? We're gonna pave it, so what I'm saying is, we're gonna pave all Main Street, it's gonna look nice, but then we're gonna have this kind of like, patchwork paving over here on Third, patchwork paving over here on Third, and it's just, it's not gonna line up.
Well, we can pave everything once.
I hate to break it to you, there's patchwork on every road in the city.
Well, and there may be more roads that need it worse, I agree.
You're not breaking anything new, man, I know that, but.
Get enough time, everybody.
I have to cut across that intersection right there by the spot, but I think there are probably residential streets that might need it worse.
Okay, so, if we're going back on that, the, what we discussed first, though, was, we fix what's underneath the street, then we fix up what's on top of the street, if we're not doing that now, that's completely new news to me, that's what we've been talking about for a while.
I thought Main Street.
Main Street was.
We have not voted.
We voted for.
We voted on Main Street, not Main Streets for that.
Agree.
I'd like to do every street.
There's a lot of gravel here now.
Pay them all, but you can do that.
So.
We'll bring it back up after Main Street gets going, I'll bring it back up then, 'cause you all probably see what I'm talking about then, you'll be like, yeah, we need to do this.
Oh, we understand, it's just a matter of where's money coming from to, to another paving job.
At that point, we'll look and listen.
Yeah, I think we should, that's.
They're gonna go to Hillcrest, y'all worry about Main Street, go to Hillcrest.
Yeah, go to Hillcrest.
You don't hear that people down here complaining.
We can all, we can all, everybody's got their own street to talk about.
I tell you right now, Hillview, Hillview's a danger, Hillview's a safety issue, it's got roots growing through the, like this.
That, that's part of it.
And that's why we said, because we had all these comparison streets that were like, what do we want to be paved first, and we all decided that we wanted to fix whatever was underneath of it, pave that, so that when we go to Hillcrest, we wanna make sure that before we paint Hillcrest again, we fix what's underneath Hillcrest, that was the point of all of this.
But the thing we voted on was Main Street, was the only one we voted on.
No, I got, I got, that's why I'm bringing it up, that's why I'm bringing it up right now.
And Derek has already, and Les have put together a, pretty much a five-year plan going out, which are the most important lines to deal with, right? And, and I'm kinda relying on their understanding of this.
We fix it on top, fix a line, fix it on top, if Hillcrest is next, we need to fix a line at Hillcrest next, then we need to fix it on top, but we need to fix, we need to do it uniformly, is what I'm saying.
I'm gonna disagree with that.
That's been the plan.
You're digging up, you're fixing up.